It's April 6, 2023. Council, or excuse me, Vice Mayor Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce someone to you tonight. I've got a special guest. I happened to be listening to our downtown public radio station the other day and heard a conversation about how do we help our family, our friends, and particularly our children navigate the troubling times and the difficult tragedies that have happened in our community? And Daniel Crosby was, Daniel, would you come to the microphone? Daniel's going to give us a little, he's a counselor here in town and had some really, I thought, appropriate and information to share about how do we navigate these times and how do we help each other navigate times? So, Daniel, if you'd do that and do our opening prayer, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shacklet. There is a, there's a principle that I've said a lot lately in a lot of my counseling sessions, and it is this: The thing that is worse than hurting is hurting alone. And I think we need each other right now. As interconnected as we are, we have all of the technology, we have all of the stuff, but I think it's so easy for so many of us to feel disconnected right now and to feel alone, especially with all the tragedies, with the Covenant School shooting, with the tornadoes that came through our backyard last week. There's just so much that we, none of us can understand it. We just don't understand why. And so, we're left with a feeling of confusion in the midst of all of this. I think it becomes even more challenging when we, we ourselves are trying to figure that out, and then we try and explain that to our children who are in the midst of it as well, and they are dealing with it in their own way. So, when it comes to managing these tough events and the emotions and everything that comes with that, I think the answer is connection. I want to suggest just four very, very brief ways that we can try and stay connected or reconnect with each other tonight. Number one, right now, I think we need a safe place to land. We can do that by letting other people know that we are open to talking about these hard things, that we're open to hearing from them that we're in this together with our kids and our friends and our family, and they can share with us if they're wrestling with something. Number two, I think we need to lead by talking to our friends and our family and our kids about what we're feeling, whether it's sadness, or anger, or confusion, or hurt. Almost always, when we say what we're feeling, someone else in the room is going to hear that, and they're going to say, "That's relatable to me. It makes me feel a little bit better because I'm not the only one dealing with it." Number three, we don't have to always have all the answers in order to help someone. In fact, I think there's a lot of power in showing our limitations and that we don't have all the answers. When I meet people who are always strong, when they never show weakness, when they have it all together, I have trouble relating to that person because I know that's not me. So, I think more and more in our world right now, there's power and there's real value in real vulnerability and authenticity. And number four, finally, let's not let this be a one-and-done conversation. It's good, yes, to check on each other, but it's even more important to say to each other, "I'm glad you came to me and talked to me about this, but is it okay if I come back to you and I check on you again next week and maybe the week after that, just to make sure you're still doing okay with all of this?" The way we cope with tragedy is we do it together. And I think we're a great community. We're a strong community, so it's very, very important right now that we just lift each other up and we stay connected and we stay together in this. That's how we get through it. So, before I pray, would it be okay if we just observe a moment of silence for the victims of the Covenant School shooting? The, I'm just going to, I'm just going to, in general, say everything that's been going on because it seems to keep piling on, doesn't it? So, let's take a moment of silence, and then I'll close us out in prayer as the meeting begins. Life is a gift that we are just reminded of right now is so precious, especially in these last couple of weeks. And I just ask that you remind us of our responsibility to not take that for granted. I just also ask that you give peace to those who are hurting right now, whether it's the natural disasters, whether it's the victims from the school, and that you would just put your hand on them and give them peace in a way that only you can, a peace that surpasses all understanding. Lord, you've given us each unique gifts and abilities and talents, and I pray that you give us wisdom to use those well. We look to you to guide our hearts towards what is good and what is right, and what is true, and what is excellent. And Lord, finally, as this meeting begins, I just pray for our council and that you bless them, that as they guide this city, that it would be in a way that honors you. Father, we love you, and we thank you for your grace. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Hope all is well with you. Tonight, I'm here to recognize the Stars Awards and Members recipients for the month of March. As you know, the purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize those employees who go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing outstanding customer service to both our internal and external customers. Tonight, recipients are two gentlemen who received an alert about a person who was missing. And I think about the speech he was just giving, it's kind of going in hand with what these guys did. They saw a situation, and they reacted to it, and made a connection, and the person they helped save actually had some issues going on. The two recipients tonight are Mr. Nate Bailey. They both work in the street department. Nate is the equipment operator. He's been with the city now almost six years. And the other is TJ Stevenson. TJ is a public works technician, and he's only been with the city a little under two months, so he's fairly new. These gentlemen were recommended before the Stars Award by three different leaders, two in the fire department. They are Captain Clay Estes and Captain Mike Adams, and then, of course, also our executive director, Mr. Raymond Hills. Here's a quick summary of the narrative that explains why these gentlemen are receiving the awards tonight. On the morning of February 15, while doing their normal drainage checks, they were stopped by a family who was panicking and very distraught. The family informed them that they were missing an elderly member and asked if they had by chance seen anyone wandering on their route. They both said no, but they would keep the eye out just in case. Well, while driving their route and turning onto Thompson Street, they came to a stop and noticed a person laying at the bottom of a steep and very deep drainage easement. It appears that the person had obviously fallen into it. Upon further review and knowing the description that had been given to them by the family, they confirmed that it was the family missing elderly person. Both TJ and Nate hurried back into their truck and went back to the family's house, where our first responders were there, and told them exactly where the location of the person. The first responders then were able to rescue the individual and reunite them with their family. Counsel, obviously, these persons, these gentlemen, did exactly what they promised. They kept their eyes out, ears open, just in case they saw someone, and they reacted. TJ and Nate, if you would, please stand. I want to thank you. I want to thank you for keeping your word. What you did is very important. You make the city, you make all of us proud. So, on behalf of the mayor, the City Council, and the great city of Murfreesboro, we recognize you as the recipients for the March Stars Award.
See that we got here? Okay, we're live. Stay there. Okay. Stay right there. That's a guy.
I brought my family, my little kids, and girlfriend.
Nice to see you. I was just playing. What's the baby's name?
His name is Dave.
Dave. He's a kid.
Tonight's a special night. I have two different proclamations. One is literally a family affair. Ms. Wallace has been with our city for quite some time. She's really, over the last month or so, become a local celebrity because I think you've been on just about every TV station. You've been on City TV 3. So, there's been a lot of, a lot of good publicity with what Ms. Wallace has done, but also her son, Steve. So, Ms. Wallace has been with the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department. Her son, Steve, Steve and I have worked together quite a few times on the marathon, so Steve retired, and you were with us how many years, Steve?
Seventeen.
Steve was with us seventeen years. And her husband, Doris, is ninety years old, and he's still working with the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department. So, literally, this is a family affair here in the city of Murfreesboro, especially in our Parks and Recreation Department. So, I have a very special proclamation. Whereas this happy occasion is celebrating your retirement on March 31, 2023, as the receptionist and volunteer cook of great food, including your famous hot water cornbread at the McFadden Community Center. And whereas Barbara Wallace was born August 7, 1933, on my anniversary, not in 1933, but in your servant's heart and many acts of kindness has earned respect and admiration of coworkers, friends, family, and the community for your many contributions as a nurse for thirty-five years, caring for patients in both intensive and cardiac care units at then the Rutherford Hospital. She served on the Tennessee Board of Nursing and worked for the Parks Recreation Department since 1998. And whereas, we are proud to say thank you and count you as a faithful part of the community having been a founding member of Believers Chapel Church for more than four decades, she's cooked many meals for the T double A double A state basketball tournament for more than forty years, as well as many other organizations in Murfreesboro, and to have the love and support of your coworkers, friends, and family as you celebrate this special day. And whereas, it is appropriate to honor our mature citizens as you will be celebrating your ninetieth birthday on August 7, and plan to celebrate, this is a big one, your seventy-fifth wedding anniversary with husband Doris Wallace on September 12, 2023. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend Barbara Wallace sincere congratulations and best wishes, and urge all of our citizens to celebrate the lives of our citizens who have reached ninety years of age. Ms. Wallace.
You hear that?
Yes.
You know, I don't think, I don't think this could be any more appropriate based upon the last week. We've had, you know, I have a ten-year-old son, and I think we all have gone through listening to the video or listening to the communication, the 911 communication of the Covenant shooting. We've watched all the videos. And then, on Thursday and Friday, to be able to listen to what's happened in Reedaville, want to commend our Murfreesboro Fire and Recreation Department. I think the chief is here, not only the chief, but Nate Williams is back here somewhere. Nate helped coordinate getting buses to get volunteers out to Reedaville, our police department. My boys, for example, just to give you an idea of how a community comes together, I didn't know this. They came home, they went out to Reedaville day before yesterday, and the entire school was out helping at a family's home who was devastated. So, you know, when something happens like what's happened in our community, it really shows who we are. And so, I think it's very appropriate that we talk about National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, because if it were not for our dispatchers, it's a hard time to get where you're going if you don't know where you're supposed to go, and that's what our dispatchers do. So, whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications Center for help. Whereas, public safety telecommunications, the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications provide a vital link to our police officers and firefighters by providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications of the Murfreesboro Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas, each public safety telecommunications has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her duties in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Shane McFarland, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim April 9 through the 15, 2023, to observe National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and ask all the citizens to join me in expressing our appreciation to the city of Murfreesboro's emergency communication personnel for their hard work and dedication.
You have the consent agenda. You have six items on your agenda. Anything wishing, or anything that needs to be removed? If not, we'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move into new business. Ordinance number seven, we have development impact fees. Craig, are you doing this?
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This is development impact fee ordinance that we've drafted. The council's met over the last, well, actually, the last couple of years to look at the study that was done by our outside consultant and recommend the development impact fees. We've looked at the, we've done a little bit of analysis on what it will do for the city. And I think it was a workshop a couple of months ago, or maybe January workshop, where we presented the school impact fees and added that in. So, you have before us an ordinance that will put the impact fees into effect. Happy to answer any questions about that and about the ordinance itself. And Mr. Tucker's here as well to talk about different aspects of development impact fees.
Just add one thing is that this ordinance sets up the framework for the impact fees, the actual fee that would be assessed based on square footage or whatever the criteria are, or its gross floor area is the criteria. That would be adopted by separate ordinance. Typically, that would probably occur around budget time, but there wouldn't, if City Council felt, you know, that it needed to be changed at some other time, that it could be done then as well.
So, this is just the mechanism that allows us to be able to collect an impact fee, and then we would determine either tonight or at budget if what that amount would be and when it would start?
I wouldn't, I mean, you certainly can discuss what the, first of all, yes, that's, you're right, it's putting the framework together to implement the fee. I would say that it has to be, the fees have to be adopted by ordinance, and so, we don't have that ordinance prepared. So, you're certainly welcome to talk about what you think those fees should be, but that would be something where we'd have to come back and present City Council with a separate ordinance that had that fee scheduled in it. And the other, in terms of the maximum fees, the maximum fees that could be assessed were those that were identified in the fee impact study performed by Bois Tischler and presented to the City Council on a couple of occasions.
I've got no issue. I know, Craig, we exchanged, you know, emails, and I appreciate you answering all my questions. I think the one thing I would like to see, I guess, addressed would be, as I referenced, you know, Joe, homeowner, who's, you know, building an attached garage, or maybe he's building a detached office on his current property because he just can't stand being in the house because his kids are driving him crazy, or his wife's driving him crazy. You know, that never happens in my house. I know it never.
What about a she shed?
That's what I'm talking about, a she shed, you know. A she shed, Sean and Jane. That's where I would say, you know, I think it makes sense, but for that current property owner who's just trying to add something that's going to enhance the value of his property, it's not necessarily, I guess, fair to him, to that particular homeowner. I would like to see something to address that to where they escaped this.
Does that not count, does that count as a dwelling to have an impact fee though?
Yeah, I thought this ordinance covered dwellings, right?
This is for dwellings.
Craig?
What's the language?
I think there is, it is, I think there's some things that we can do to make that more clear, based on Austin's, Mr. Maxwell's question, is that it only, in the residential area, it's only imposed in, to structures that, you know, are dwellings that do have a room that, you know, where someone can sleep. You know, the question is, if someone, you know, makes a, you know, builds an accessory structure that is air-conditioned, has air-conditioned and heated, that could potentially be converted at some point in time to an apartment, and then that would be, that would be a dwelling and would have bypassed the impact fee.
But it could only be converted to an apartment if it was within zone of a multifamily property. If it's a single-family zoning, you couldn't just add an accessory use without going through a rezoning process.
The state law has changed not too long ago that allows structures to be added in the zoning camp, prohibit them.
But I don't think our current ordinance, and Kevin Jones, the building co-director's not here, but I think our current ordinance, we don't allow accessory structures to have kitchens.
Right.
So, we can't put an oven. So, I mean, I guess you could live there and cook with a microwave. That's pretty much what I do my cooking on, but...
But we'd know at the permitting phase whether or not it would classify as a dwelling and require an impact fee.
Correct.
We're happy to adjust it to meet whatever is the will of council. Something set in stone.
The demarcation in livable square feet is usually heated and cooled areas, and so, you know, if you were adding a garage, certainly, that doesn't add anything to what we're trying to recover for. But if you were to build an accessory structure that was heated and cooled, and it could become livable, then, you know, then you'd have an impact, and you'd need to address that one.
But I think that is an important distinction, just because a lot of people are heating and cooling their garages these days. Austin's correct, but we can tell that...
It's man cave, it's man cave, Jane.
Or, I mean, mine's cool.
When these calculations were done for the study, were building permits for accessory structures and garages that taken into account for the study?
We'd have to go back and look at the study. I don't know if it got into that detail. It used a lot of aggregate numbers, so if it was, when they got the permit, it was identified as livable square feet, it would have been, it would have been looked at. The, I don't believe the study went down to a square foot level. It was looking at other types of structures and measuring it that way. So, I'm not sure our study hit that, but it doesn't change the calculations on what the impact fee would be substantially at all. Between, I guess, between now and secondary, the best thing to do is letting us tighten up the definition on what it is that the fee would be assessed for, and I'm going to take a look at that, and if we need to make adjustments from there, we can do it.
Perfect.
Hey, I want to make a quick comment. I've said, as we've been discussing this, that I was not going to vote on an impact fee, and I don't think that's fair to the council that, Adam, tell me if I'm misinterpreting our conversations that we've had. I'm going to vote for the impact fee because I think we do need an impact fee. I don't think growth does pay for itself. I'll hold off on the discussion on how much that fee's going to be, just with the line of work I'm in, but I don't think it's fair for me to have the council vote on an impact fee and me not vote on that. I want to make sure, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get in the discussion on what the fee is, but I do think it's something that, you know, we're the only municipality in middle Tennessee, period, and I work in all of those municipalities that does not have an impact fee. I can make the argument, we should have done that twenty-five years ago. So, anyway, I wanted to make sure and make that comment.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, item eight, conditions for water and sewer service to property outside the city limits. Mr. Gore.
Mayor McFarland, Council, thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight. I did, I did do a little... I did, I did do a little bullet here. I don't normally like to just read slides, but I do think for the, for the general public, it's good to kind of highlight the, the, highlight the main bullets of this ordinance. So this is amending the water and sewer service to property outside city limits. If adopted, it would allow the City Council, acting in its sole discretion, to authorize sewer service by the city to a property located outside the city limits without first requiring a petition for annexation, provided the property is owned, what's wrong with you? Okay, thanks. What's wrong with me?
Can you start over there? I'm killed.
Start over? Sorry. I was like, what did I do? Sorry, anyway, all right. First, the property is owned by either Rutherford County or the Rutherford County Board of Education. A public elementary school and/or secondary school is located on or is intended to be constructed on the property. And Rutherford County and the Rutherford County Board of Education into a written, enter into a written development agreement with the city with respect to the property, the terms of which are acceptable to City Council. Added a couple of other bullets here. The development agreement that the ordinance would, would require could allow provisions for the City Council to waive or rebate certain fees associated with the construction or expansion of a school that would otherwise be assessed. The water and sewer connection fees, however, would still be assessed to the new county school. Currently, that's assessed at $24 per student. And any non-academic facility such as a concessions or fieldhouse would be assessed as a commensurate single-family unit equivalency. So this was, we primarily discussed this at the March workshop, and this is kind of the work, the work product that you all directed us to provide as, after that workshop. So I'm available for any questions. Adam did the heavy lift, lifting on this, so he's available as well. Yeah, it was recommended by the Water Resources Board at our March board meeting as well.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Gore, please call the roll.
No, not Mr. Gore, Mr.-
Just try it.
Go ahead.
Do you know our names?
Try them on Jennifer's face right there.
Part of your job description.
I'm sorry.
Jennifer just got fired.
Completely off the rails. Sorry about that.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gore. All right, we'll go to land use matters. Mr. Blomley, we have rezoning property along Agri Park Drive.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor and members of Council. Our first public hearing tonight is for the property that is colored in green on the map before you. It's along the east side of Agri Park Drive, north of Franklin Road. It's currently zoned CH and consists of 9.75 acres. The applicants are requesting to rezone the property to PRD for 166-unit multifamily 55 and up community. I won't go into too much detail about the development itself because Mr. Ta, Mr. Taylor has a PowerPoint, don't want to steal his thunder. But we have, surrounding areas are primarily zoned commercial highway and RM16. Surrounding land uses directly to the east of the subject property is the Harper's Point, or at one point it was called the Harper's Point Apartment Complex. And I believe this is actually the back half of that property that was intended to be developed as the next phase of Harper's Point, but never was. Anywhere is currently zoned commercial highway, but Harper's Point is zoned RM16. To the north of the subject property is another multifamily residential development zoned RM16 that was developed about five years ago. To the northwest of the subject property is the Vintage at Blackman Apartment Complex that was developed about five or six years ago as well, also zoned RM16. Directly across Agri Park Drive to the west is land that is also zoned commercial highway. And the only developed parcel of that commercial highway zoned land is developed with the Mulch Company, which is due south of the Vintage at Blackman Apartments. So as you can see, the property in the area is basically all zoned either CH or RM16. And there have been large CH-zoned parcels that have remained undeveloped for, for years. And there still are large undeveloped properties along Agri Park Drive zoned CH that are, that are still undeveloped. Not a whole lot of interest in, in commercial development on these parcels over the years. But this property is requested to be zoned PRD for a 166-unit, 55 and up multifamily development. For 9.75 acres, that's a density of 17.03 dwelling units per acre. You may recall that back on September the 22nd, Council voted on a sewer allocation variance for the 17.03 dwelling units per acre. And that was approved by Council that evening. So the sewer allocation variance has been approved for this property, and now they're moving forward with the zoning of this property. Staff is in support of the application to rezone it to PRD as, as we've heard time and time again from folks who visit our office, that there is a need for, for 55 and up housing options in our community. And also, we have worked very hard with the developers to make sure that this development is highly amenitized and with large amounts of open space. And so Mr. Taylor will go, go over those details in just a moment. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on February the 1st and voted to recommend its approval. We'll need to conduct a public hearing tonight and vote on this matter on first reading. But before we conduct our public hearing, Mr. Matt Taylor has a presentation to give to you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley, Mayor, members of the Council. Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Kevin Woodley, the applicant on the project, and do have a brief presentation over the Arden at Murfreesboro. Arden, as Mr. Blomley said, is about just under 10 acres, located on the east side of Agri Park Drive, shown here in the pink and white lines. Today, it's heavily wooded with some tall grasses and scrub over the parts that are not wooded. The site generally drains from Agri Park toward the east, directly into the Harper's Point Development and into the Sam's Club parcel as well. As Mr. Blomley said, today, the site is zoned commercial highway. We have requested a PRD, a planned residential development. It is surrounded, as Mr. Blomley said, by commercial highway and RM16 zonings around us. And then several of these projects Mr. Blomley went over, but the yellow, teal, and brown hatched properties are all multifamily. The purple property to the top of the screen is Lane Agri Park Center. And then the yellow and green dots are hotels located along John Rice Boulevard. And then the blue is TSC, while pink is Sam's Club, just to orient you in the area. This is looking into the property from Agri Park Drive, showing some of that scrub, tall grasses and trees. This is looking north, so the property would be directly to the right, looking directly along Agri Park Drive. This would be looking exactly opposite, so the property is on the left here. This is the Harper's Point, or was Harper's Point, to the east of our site. This is the development to the north, and then it's kind of to the northwest of our site. Property itself, as Mr. Blomley said, we've proposed 166 residences here. 136 of those would be in the central building. That is a four-story building. And those would be a mixture of one and two bedrooms in that building. The surrounding 15 buildings are cottage units. There'd be 30 of those. All of those are two bedrooms in size. We've also got planned for 35 garage spaces inside of five buildings, which are kind of the orange hatched area at the bottom of the screen here. Again, it is highly amenitized, and we have preserved about 30% open space across the entire site. We will have a deed restriction of 55-plus for the project. So we'll record that deed, provide that to Planning Department prior to any permits on the project. We do have excellent circulation and access. We've got two access points on the Agri Park Drive. Those line up and utilize where the city turned those curbs out whenever they built Agri Park Drive. We've got excellent access all the way around the building. And then we've also got excellent pedestrian access with sidewalks that completely encircle the site, as well as have a network of internal sidewalks to promote people walking the site and meeting their neighbors as well. We've also got a very pronounced drop-off area at our front door for this particular use. We did work very diligently with planning staff to make sure the architecture complied with Murfreesboro's requirements. I feel like the project had good bones to begin with, but with every project, we have to make some modifications. So I think that you'll see a very detailed project, a very, a lot of articulation in the building, a lot of building plane movement, a lot of roofline movement, and all quality materials. We all have, we have all masonry materials on all of our buildings here. So you'll see the individual balconies for each unit. You'll see that very pronounced entryway. This is the front of the building, so you're kind of looking at it from Agri Park Drive at this location. And then flip to the other side of Agri Parks. This is coming from the old fort side. So a very attractive building, a lot of dormers. And then this is from the northeast corner. You can start to see how the cottages and the central building work together, how these cottages kind of build up to the four-story building in the central part of the development, and then how the porches on the cottages, as well as the balconies, all come into effect. And this is just kind of giving you a Main Street view between the two cottages, the convenience of the parking located in these areas, as well as the walkability. One thing that Arden prides itself on is, feels like it sets itself apart from other developments through its quality, but also being affordable at the same time with a target, monthly rental targeted at that social security stipend amount. But then we've also elevated the project with amenities both inside and outside. And so we've got a good mix of amenities. Some of those are geared toward a social setting, such as the library and the great room, meant to bring people out of their rooms, meet their neighbors, meet the residents, make friends. It's good for, it's good for the mind, it's good for the soul. We also have things to take care of the body, fitness, arts and craft, as well as what we've termed a wellness or meditation room. You'll have some physical therapy, range of motion type therapies there, yoga, things to, that are low-impact for our residents, but will keep them lively for years to come. Outside, as with all of our projects today, pets are a very important part of our life. So we've got a dedicated pet park in the northeast corner of the project, shown here in yellow. And then one of the nice amenities, not necessarily an activity, but are the garages that will be for lease to house their cars. This has been very successful for Arden at other projects. Matter of fact, I wish they had a few more here. And then the white line with the blue dots, you'll see the extensive network of sidewalks and walk-in trails. So again, it completely encircles the site, as well as an abundance of sidewalks and walk-in paths internal to the site to promote people to get out on nice days. And then really, our biggest central feature and physical activity outside is this central courtyard, which is on the rear of the building. And so all of this is held together and anchored by this pool house directly in the middle of this area. And it's flanked on each side by the pickleball court and the pool areas. Those are going to be very physical activity areas. But then you have more social settings, such as the fireplace, the event lawn, grilling station. So you can do a little bit of everything here, meant to mimic your old house, where you could do all these things in your backyard. But really, we want to bring people out of their rooms again, get them to develop friendships. And if you don't want to be down the mix, you can sit up on the second-floor balcony, enjoy a cocktail, and watch everybody else do those things. So it's a little bit of everything for our residents. It's a very well-rounded package, we think. To achieve this, we have asked for three exceptions as compared to an RM16 zoning. Two of those have to do with the height of that central building, and the third has to do with parking. And so the parking, Arden owns and/or operates multiple facilities around the country, mainly in the southeast. They also have several under other, several other projects under construction and entitled. So they have their own experience, but they've also went out to the market, surveyed what the industry standard is for these type of projects. And it is approximately 1.1 spaces per unit. What they found is about 90% of the residents at these have cars. And so if you use that 1.1 with our proposed 166, you'd need about 183 spaces. We're providing about, about 30 more than that at 212. We also, just for another data point, we went, we went out to ITE manual, which is a national engineering standard manual. It recommends about .6 spaces per unit. That'd be about 102 spaces. We felt like that was low, so we still stuck with wanting to be above that 1.1 spaces per unit. We, we feel, we know that this project is adequately parked with its current design. Obviously, my client has a lot resting on that. If, you know, if a resident cannot find a space, cannot find their preferred space, then they're not going to renew their lease whenever it comes up. And so he's got more at stake than anybody to make sure that this site is appropriately designed. And then from a height perspective, we have requested that four-story to let us be up around 45 to 50 feet. That is in line with the surrounding developments and what you'd expect in the commercial highway and RM16 areas. If you look, this is to the north. You can see it's three stories, so it's probably in that 35 to 40-foot range. The same thing with the newest project to the northwest. And then even the oldest project out there is probably in that same range. And if you look around the area, probably the Costco, the hotels, they are all probably in that 45 to 50-foot range itself. And so we have requested this so we can really condense our footprint and provide more green and more amenities. But furthermore, we've also tried to negate any impact that any extra height might have on a neighbor by locating that toward the central part of the project. And so we're not crowding that extra story up on a property line, impeding on, on a neighbor. We've really located that well away from any property lines and tried to build it up so it looks appropriate with these cottages scattered around the perimeter of the site. And so I'll be happy to answer any questions now. We're after the hearing. My client is also here, if you have specific questions for him as well.
What is the, would be the highest and lowest rent amount?
Going to ask my client to answer that.
Hi, my name's Kevin Woodley. I'm with Arden Senior Living. I would say it would start in the high $1,500 a month range. And then the cottages would probably be in the $1,900 range. What we do is we, we essentially try to offer services on an à la carte basis. So in Charlotte, for example, we have three properties there. We have a relationship with Adrian, which is a big hospital network. They have nurse practitioners they can call. But if they don't need those services, they don't pay for them. Transportation, food services, continuing education, fitness classes, a lot of those are included. But what this does is it breaks down that kind of old model of senior housing where even if you don't need meals, you're still paying $3,500 a month, even if you just don't use them.
I know you said there was a 55-plus project.
Yep.
What about children?
No children.
So if I'm a grandparent?
We do a maximum stay of four days.
So my granddaughter can only stay four days?
Typically, yeah.
Y'all going to put her out?
I mean, I'm sure we could probably make an exception, but we've had, we've had issues in the past, right? This is not the community where we want someone moving in. That's not what our resident is, is looking for.
Well, just as a grandparent?
Sure.
From a grandparent's serious standpoint, some grandparents get their children, grandchildren for the summer, couple of weeks of summer. I mean, that's just, and I can understand no kids, maybe full-time living, but grandparents, that's, you know, we live for, to see our grandkids.
Typically, my, my parents are calling me after two days to come get my kids, so.
Well, again, that's in the- Well, again, that's in the, in the, in the lease agreement. I'm sure the property manager is.
You are an exceptional grandparent.
Bill Shacklet, he wants his grandkids to stay more than four days, right?
I'd go see them.
Because then you can leave. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor?
I got a question for Matt. Just, I know how you love it when I bring up questions to you, but it's your math on page three. So from a residential density in your booklet on RM16, it's a lower density for this project, and that's, I'm assuming it's because the RM16 in other apartments have three-bedroom units and more people. That's, you know, my, my.
Sure. And so I, I think what we're seeing, those, that 1.9 and that 1.1, it's referenced on page three, those are coming from national standards. And so the, the 1.1 for the senior living is coming from a, a national standard. It was Gray Star, who is a national property manager. I think they manage more property than anybody else. And so I think that's a survey of over 100 of their facilities around the country is at that 1.1, so it's a pretty good sample size, I would say. The 1.9 is coming from a multifamily, a national multifamily production there. So I, I don't know what that number is necessarily specific to Murfreesboro, but I would say at least our newer ones, that probably sounds about right. You probably just have more single people that maybe are widowed that are living here. It would be my assumption.
And a question for, is it Kevin?
Yes.
What's the average age just in your ballpark?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two?
So it's 50, 55 plus, I think it's just a little more antiquated. I mean, they're more than welcome to come, but the average age is, is 71, 72. Average resident is a single female, 15 to 20%.
Single female retired, you know, on a single income?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But obviously, they're not incurring schools and things like that because they're of that age. Those days are over.
Exactly, yeah. It's more the social impact, the social aspect. They want to be around folks, they want to sell their home, maintenance-free lifestyle, you know?
Yeah, Bill's over here saying he's thinking about one.
Do I sign? No. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor?
I am in their age spectrum.
All right, we'll need to open, excuse me, hold a public hearing for this rezoning request for 9.75 acres. If you want to come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address to the council, you'll have three minutes speaking as an individual. If you're representing an association, you'll have five minutes. If you'll keep all questions directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. If you want to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
My name is Judy Reeves. I live at 208 Cass Drive in Murfreesboro, and I'm glad I stayed for the meeting. I didn't know everything about this particular thing. But this development is interesting because I'm over 55, and I wouldn't be interested in this because of the noise and the traffic in the area. This is really close to where I live. If you look at a map, Cass Street is just perpendicular to, perpendicular to Old Fort, and Agri Park is in back of the unit that we live in. So this is going to increase a lot of traffic. And I also have a question about the 30% open space?
If you'll get that directed towards us.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Because he mentioned 30% of it was open space. Does that include parking and asphalt? Because I, it doesn't. It's actual green space.
Green space, yes, ma'am.
Green and not the swimming pool and not the.
Correct.
Thing, okay.
You have, you have open space and formal open space.
Okay, I didn't know the difference.
Yes, ma'am.
But yeah, I'm really concerned about the addition of traffic. I don't know when this is expected to be built, would be the other question.
Okay, I'll get.
And also that social security stipend will not meet the, I couldn't afford the, the lowest rent that was there, the 1,500. That's what I get a month.
Okay.
So it would take all of it. I couldn't eat.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23OZ07. Mr. Taylor, I want to make sure open space, formal open space, and also actual green open space.
So the open space, it would include the amenity area. So it would include the park or the pool and the pickleball. So it does include the recreational areas. It does not include parking or asphalt. And so it would include all of the green areas plus the recreational areas. And then the formal open space would be those recreational areas.
And then Bill, Tom?
So by, we would anticipate hopefully submitting a site plan in the, this is April, May, May timeframe for like a June planning commission is what our hope would be. And then probably we would think permits in early fall, probably what, a 12 to 18-month build schedule? Probably about 18 months. So it'll probably be open sometime in the spring or summer of '25, if I'm doing some math correctly.
Okay. All right, you now have ordinance 23OZ07 on the floor for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we're going to move to item 10, amending the zoning ordinance for planning. You, Ms. Knopf? Floor's yours.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Since this is my first time presenting to you, I want to introduce myself. I'm Jennifer Knopf. I'm a newly hired project engineer for the Planning Commission, the Planning Department, and a newly appointed floodplain administrator. I've lived here in Murfreesboro since 2001, and I've worked for Metro Nashville for 20 years before being hired here in, in October. So I've been here six months now.
All right, we're glad to have you.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm presenting to you the ordinance amending section 34 of the floodplain zoning. The final flood hazard determination for Rutherford County, Tennessee, and incorporated areas was issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency on November 9, 2022. And within six months from the date of this letter, the community is required to adopt the current effective and final revised flood insurance study report and flood insurance rate map into their standards and regulations as a condition of continued eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program. The new maps reflect only those select panels included in the restudied portions of the Stones River watershed. In addition to the new maps, we will be adding those map panels where city limits have encroached onto neighboring jurisdictions through annexation. Other changes include minor revisions as recommended by the state's NFIP coordinator in order to be consistent with the FEMA Model Floodplain Management Ordinance. The draft amendment presented to you tonight has been reviewed and approved by FEMA. Communities that fail to enact the necessary floodplain management regulations will be suspended from participation in the NFIP and subject to the prohibitions contained in section 202A of the Flood Disaster Protection Act of 1973 in Title 44 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Section 59.24. The deadline to come into compliance is May 9, 2023, and that just means get kicked out of the program. People can't buy flood insurance. If they can't buy flood insurance, they can't get a federally backed mortgage. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this ordinance amendment during its regular meeting on February 1, 2023, and now staff is recommending a public hearing be, to be conducted and a vote on first reading. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions for Ms. Knopf? All right, we need to hold a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23O08.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ms. Knopf, thank you. Great job. All right, we'll move to item 11, Plan of Services and Annexation for Highway 99 Right Of Way. Ms. Baumley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. I got to get out of Mr. Taylor's presentation here. All right, our next item is a rezoning, or excuse me, an annexation and plan of services for property along Highway 99 south of Clear Ridge Drive. This is directly to the north of the Ferrari property. The Ferrari property was considered for annexation and zoning back in September, and I will get that map up here. There we go. It is the, the, the right-of-way that we're considering for annexation is the area that is in, shaded in blue on the map before you. It's about 3,600 linear feet of New Salem Highway or Highway 99 right-of-way. It's actually called Highway 99 this far to the southwest. The State Department of Transportation has responded to our legal department with a, a statement of no objection to the annexation of this right-of-way. Planning Commission initially studied the Rutherford County Schools properties on both sides of this right-of-way. You'll recall that we did not receive written consent from Rutherford County Government, and so we amended the plan of services and amended the study area to only include the right-of-way of Highway 99 and removing the Schools properties from the annexation study area. But as I mentioned, this is about 3,600 linear feet of state, state right-of-way. In addition to being directly adjacent to the Schools properties, it is also the right-of-way that is in front of the Ferrari property. And as I mentioned earlier, the Ferrari property was considered for annexation and zoning in September, and we have been holding second and final reading of the Ferrari property until after the consideration of this, the annexation of this right-of-way. So while the annexation of the Ferrari property has been, has been approved by council, it has not gone into effect yet because second and final reading has not been voted on for the zoning, and the annexation does not go into effect until the, until the zoning is approved. We have the plan of services in your agenda materials. It shows that we will be able to provide services to this segment of right-of-way upon annexation. And this, the amount of services, or the level of services that will be, that will be required to provide is relatively minimal because it's right-of-way. Of course, police and fire services will be provided to this right-of-way in the event of emergencies or auto accidents, police matters. And then also the, the city will enter an, enter, into an agreement with the State Department of Transportation for the maintenance of this segment of state right-of-way. The Planning Commission recommended the approval of this, and the annexation of this right-of-way at its February the 1st regular meeting, and forwarded this recommendation on to you. We need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, and then vote on the, both the plan of services and the annexation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Baumley? All right, seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider resolution 23RPS09 for the plan of services.
Before we did, I wanted to read something, Mr. Mayor. So for this item on the agenda, you know, my thought process on this in particular is, I spoke to Mr. Kerr in transportation, and for this 3,600 feet of roadway to be expanded, it would be a $5 million to $7 million. That's our 20% cost share as a city. It's a $30 million project, at least in today's dollars. But our cost share would be somewhere between $5 and $7 million. Once a roadway gets an average daily traffic count of 15,000 cars, it would trigger such a review and expansion. This particular roadway is not there yet, as it averages anywhere from 8,136 to 9,632 cars daily over the past five years. It's probably two-thirds of the way there. But assuming in 10 years that we hit the 15,000 average daily traffic volume, then please consider this, you know, moving forward in terms of annexing this. Because if we take this roadway and the Ferrari property is subsequently built out, and those 170 homes, that's just a guess that I'm going to build, that they're going to build out there, that's $425,000 a year in property taxes. 170 homes at 2,500, that's what we get as a city. But in speaking with Craig and Aaron today, in terms of a property tax dollar and what goes towards a road project, it's essentially 44% of a dollar, or think of it as 44 cents. So the $425,000 a year only gives us $187,000 for this section of the road. And over 10 years, that becomes 1.87 million dollars. Now, 1.87 million dollars for that road to annex it, and then the Ferrari property, you know, obviously is in the city and gets access to city sewer, 1.87 versus the city cost of $5 to $7 million, and that's in today's dollars, means there's a gap, from my view, of anywhere from $4 to $5 million that other taxpayers in the city are going to have to absorb. I live on Southeast Broad. That's great, you know, for out there, but I don't go out to Rockville. I don't drive Highway 99. I'm feeling like we're going to do this, and to use a term, you know, is, is it really worth it, I guess, at the end of the day? He's certainly welcome to build his homes and develop them and all that. That's great, that's America. But is annexing that road in the best interest of every taxpayer in the city is what I'm getting at. And that's again in today's cost. Most of this stretch, you know, has county schools on it to the left and to the right, along with the new county public safety building. If there was additional land along this stretch that could be developed, say another 500 homes, then I could say, okay, yes, it's worth it because it will pay for itself in time. But at this point in time, I just don't see the logic in grabbing this section of the roadway at 3,600 square feet, because at the end of the day, the 170 homes that would come into the city, you know, once they build it, I don't see it helping us pay for that section of the road, is what I'm getting at. So those are my thoughts on it. I just feel like by doing this, we're passing a cost to every other taxpayer in the city that we probably don't need to be doing for this particular section of the road. That's the way I look at it.
So what you're saying is that the taxpayers are going to absorb most of this?
Well, what I'm saying is those 170 houses, that's just a number, maybe they're going to build 200, but whatever is built out there is not going to offset the cost of improving that road.
You're saying widening that road, right?
Widening it to three to five lanes at some point in time. We're two-thirds of the way there on an average daily traffic count.
Yeah, at some point in time. You don't know if it's 10 years, 50 years, tomorrow.
That's a guess. You know, I'm just saying 10 years. If you look at the 2040 traffic plan, which, that's what, 16 years? It, it would say that it has to have something. It would be a grade D, and I wish Jim was here, he could offer more comment on that, but that's my views on it.
I never looked at it in that, that way, in the depth that you've gone through explaining it, Don. Seems like it makes sense.
It's, if it was connecting to one section, you're going to put 1,000 houses in there. To me, it's, okay, let's annex the road. But you're talking about a small amount of houses, and then we're on the hook for a section of road that, down the road, who knows what it'll cost the city?
Well, my thoughts after listening to you, you know, as taxpayers, we already have more than enough on us, and if this is going to be a big barrier, seems like it makes sense, but I don't know.
Well, I, I'm not a, it's, it's.
Well, I, I'm not a, is, is Jim here? Is Jim Kerr here? No?
No, he had engagement tonight.
Okay. Anyone who's been here longer than me know if, if those numbers are, it just seemed, that was a lot bigger number than I understood it to be, when I researched this.
For the road cost?
Yes.
Yeah, so, what I passed around to you is an email he sent to me, and he referenced, you know, you know, it's 30. Here, I'll read you the email that Jim sent me. "Austin, I have enclosed five years of TDOT average daily traffic counts for Highway 99 just east of the Rockville School Site. Generally, ADT volumes will need to exceed 15,000 before looking at a five-lane cross-section. We also received some state maintenance funds from TDOT that can only be used on state routes for maintenance of potholes, minor paving, snow removal, litter removal, and pavement markings. Chris," that's Chris Griffith, "has provided the following information regarding today's cost associated with potential widening. We haven't seen any proposed typical sections on the extension of Highway Nine, Highway 99, but looking at typical numbers for either a three-lane or five-lane section extended to just past the Schools, assuming it would tie into the proposed Ferrari property road improvements, the project would run in today's cost in the range of 28 to 35 million. Typical TDOT cost sharing of 80/20 would put the city's and/or county's portion at 5.6 to 7 million."
Hey, Austin, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
Where does that road widening begin? I mean, does it start at Kason Lane or St. Andrews and go all the way up?
He's widening on 99.
There is a project to widen 99 up towards veterans. I don't, I don't think it goes.
There's, so there's already, there's already a project in
Take it to.
Phase four of Highway 99, it's 1.3 miles to the west
Right.
of the interchange, it's already going to be done. It's, it's already city, so then there's another, Austin, I think that there's another two miles from that 1.3 miles to the school, is the, the additional response, is what we're annexing in. So I, and I'm not questioning, but at 28 million for two miles sounds
Extremely high.
Yeah, I don't think that's right.
So, and I'm not discrediting, of course, it's not you, because it's just the information you're getting, but that, I mean, that just doesn't, 14 million a mile sounds really high.
Yeah, and the question I'd asked him, Shane?
Yeah.
The original question, what is the ultimate cost to annex this particular section of roadway? That was the spirit in which I asked it. So that's, that's what I'm thinking, that's the number I got back. Now, is that for the entire project? I don't know. I'm, I'm going off of what the question I asked.
What did, I mean, we, we just funded
I don't think we
Several phases.
I don't think we spent 20, I, I don't know. I, I just don't remember even the, the section that we just got finished on Highway 99 being $30 million.
Sam's doing math over there, I can
Well, that's, that's a
It's like we got our phones out.
The city shared what he's saying is
Yeah.
would be 5.6 to 7. Here comes Sam.
Yeah, so, right now, we use about $1,500 per linear foot on a five-lane roadway, and that gets us about $5 to $7 million per mile. I think this project, and I don't know the exact limits, but I, but I do know that Veterans Parkway is the boundary of the next phase of State Route 99 widening. And when we analyzed this before and talked about before, we envisioned that it would be widened from Veterans Parkway to at least the Ferrari property in some future TDOT project. And so my belief is that Mr. Griffith's numbers would get it from Veterans Parkway to the Ferrari property, which is, and I don't remember that distance, but it was
$1,500 a linear foot at three miles is 20 point, 25.7 million.
Yes.
Yeah, it's 2.25, it's two and a quarter to get to the other side of, to the west side of the school properties.
Is that our cost of 20 million, or TDOT's cost of 20 million?
It would have to be TDOT.
Yeah, that's, that's the total construction cost.
Our cost would be 5.1.
Yeah.
If, if we enter, if we enter a project development agreement on that road with, with TDOT, and, and the other, you know, commentary I might have for the mayor and council tonight is that the Ferrari property would not be the source of the 15,000 cars per day, it would be other contributions in that corridor, including traffic from outside of our community, plus city projects that we have already approved to the, you know, between here and Veterans Parkway, in that three-mile stretch. All of those would contribute to the, to the increased growth. We did that on about, I think we estimated about 2% to 3% per year, which is typically what we see in, in average traffic growth along those major corridors.
Yeah, that, that was kind of my thought, Sam, was, I think, if my memory serves me correctly, this development only has like 180 or something homes in it. I mean, those 180 homes isn't requiring, aren't, is not requiring us to expand the roadway this much. It's, the roadway needs expansion for many reasons, including traffic.
It will need expansion because of community growth and regional growth. State Route 99 is a regional arterial from I-24, you know, into southeast, southwest Rutherford County, and, and on over into Williamson County, Coffee County, not Coffee County, Bedford County, and then, you know, back toward, to the north. So it, it would be a regional project, and, and we do often participate with TDOT to encourage them to advance projects along, and, and those numbers were correct. The other thing I, I thought I heard in, in your analysis, Mr. Maxwell, is that, that you stopped accumulating tax contributions for roadways from this property when construction started, but we'll get 30 to 50 years use, beneficial use out of this roadway, and those homes will continue paying that annual property tax and contributing to the, I think you, you referred to a 44% share, so I, I didn't remember your numbers.
Yeah, I just did 10 years.
Just 10 years.
Assuming in 10 years.
Well, you would assume in 10 years, but that, what we typically do is, we typically finance roads for their life beyond construction, and so we would be retiring debt for this after construction in 15 years, but, but, but we would get, you know, 30 to 50 years of additional use that wouldn't require additional city match out there. So those homes would continue contributing, and I, I don't remember what your number was, but it was 450,000 per year, and then you reduced that?
Yeah, I think it was 170 at 2,500 a year. That was the math. Obviously, that would go up, assuming home values go up.
It, it would go up, but we would, you know, those, they would continue to contribute to that debt service of roadways for our community long after this construction is, is funded, and, and we would get, like I say, another 30 to 50 years of, of practical use out of that roadway, or, or maybe longer, with just routine maintenance and upgrades.
I want to, I think Austin's got some, I think that's great information and a good way to look at it. The only thing, you know, in Craig, myself, we've had conversations, or a meeting with Mr. Reed, or Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Carr talking, or Mayor Carr
Mayor Carr.
talking about this project, and, and I, I want to just fully go on record as saying, you know, I think the property to the west, next to Rockville Meadows, is, the acreage next to Rockville Meadows is getting ready to go through County Planning Commission for, or it's going through, or already has gone through, Planning Commission for an additional 200 and some odd homes on that acreage by right. And I think, and this was our discussion that we had with the county, you know, and we talked about this at the Airport Commission, it's really tough that we have people come up to us and complain about traffic in an area where we didn't necessarily cause those traffic issues. We didn't build a three-campus school on a two-lane state route. And, and I think from discussions with TDOT, I don't think TDOT at any point right now, after talking to Commissioner, or Representative Rudd, that they're going to be jumping up and down to fund a road project on Highway, Highway 99, because it was my understanding when the, when the Schools were built on Highway 99, TDOT had significant concerns about building those Schools on the state route. But I, the, the reason I say that, I think we're going to have to make sure that any, on this 2.1-mile stretch, there's going to have to be some participation with others besides just the city of Murfreesboro for this road to get built, period. I don't think it's fair for the city of Murfreesboro to go out predominantly in an area that's, that people don't want to be annexed because it's the country, and say, we, we want to fuss about our traffic, but yet we don't want to contribute to the issue on trying to get the road fixed. And so I think that was the understanding that we talked about with the annexation of the road to get to this property. I mean, in hindsight, if I could go back 15 years or 10 years ago, I, I would have probably said we shouldn't have annexed anything around the school, if we knew where we are now. But otherwise, if we don't do this, in my opinion, that road is never going to get taken care of. The road is never going to get widened, and that's nothing against the county and what they're, they're working on. I think we're doing everything we can to work with the county, but, you know, I couldn't tell you the last time that any county government has widened a state route from three lanes to five lanes, at least in Rutherford County. I mean, that's just, that's what the municipalities do. So, the reason I'm saying that, I would want to go on record publicly to say to the residents who live in the unincorporated area of Highway 99, if we annex this property and you want to come complain about traffic, then you're going to have to talk to your county commissioner in that area to help the city with funding to be able to get that road widened, and it's going to take a partnership to do that. That, that's why I'm supportive of annexing it, because I don't think if we don't annex it, it's, the situation's ever going to get taken care of. So, and I completely agree with everything you just said.
Yeah.
And as long as I'm up here, you know, voting to spend another 6 to 7 million dollars in an area that there are some, there's some city benefit, but it's going to have to be a partnership with the county. And luckily, I do think with Commissioner Reed and with Mayor Carr, they've intimated that they would be supportive of working on that partnership to be able to get that road taken care of and getting it widened.
But if we didn't, they would be on the hook for it. And what you're saying is, is they're on the hook, but they're probably not going to widen it.
I, I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah.
But I, I just think that you have to look at what the track record
Yeah.
is on any county government building infrastructure like this, and you typically don't see that. I hope that's why, you know, we would be able to partner, like, I think it would be a shame on some of that property that's to the east of the Public Safety Center and Elementary to try to come into the county for development without having the conversation of, of widening that, that road. So, and, and there's an argument right now, it needs to be widened right now.
Well, and I think if, and I'm not a math person, so thank you for doing the math, it is not my strong suit, but if, if you're estimating here, Austin, that $187,000 yearly would go toward, you know, this road footage, but I think you assumed that it was 10 years. If, if what I'm hearing from the experts is that we're getting 30 to 40 years out of a, or 30 to 50, then at 30 years, the tax revenue alone from those houses is 5.6 million.
Correct, but keep in mind, that's today's cost. I don't know what it's going to cost in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years.
But we're expanding it today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not in 30 years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
Okay.
But the other part too, that, that would be another discussion that we're not taking into account, is, you know, typically, the, the county tax rate is a little, little over double what ours is right now, double plus some. And so I think that's where those homes that are coming into that area that are generating, you know, 120% of what we're paying right now, that would be the discussion to talk about using some of that to widen the road as well, so.
And we tried to do this without annexing the road, and the county threw every stumbling block they could to stop that.
I certainly get that. I'm well aware of that. And this is the only way, you know, the property owner wants to be annexed, he wants to be on sewer, I get it, that's in his right. I'm worried about just the overall cost to every taxpayer in the city of Murfreesboro, that's why I'm bringing this up.
Yeah, it's a good
But to Sam's point, if you're talking about a house that's 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, and you look at it long-term, perhaps it does pay for it, assuming those costs don't get crazy, like everything has gotten crazy over the last four or five years due to COVID and everything else. So, I've said, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, you go ahead, Austin.
No, no, I insist.
It's all, all good points.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I've been a big proponent of this project since the beginning, and, and I'm not one to want to spend taxpayer money haphazardly, but I think that this is a win-win for the city, for the housing market, and for the traffic in front of Rockville School. And those are all things that affect and that we hear about daily, is the traffic. So if we can expand the road and collect the money back from the taxpayers on the houses that are being built right next door, I'm, I can't not support it.
But can I, I want to make one more comment, and this is just, we've talked about this in our, this is just my opinion. I am absolutely not interested in going any further, just because when this piece of property develops and there's going to be sewer to this piece of property, and then the argument of, well, let's just go to the next piece of property, I'm 100% against getting any further outside of the city limits than where this road is right now. I mean, I do think the valid argument, if you have a piece of, when you, when, way before me and, and us that are sitting here, when sewer was run to this piece of property and stubbed there, it's like building a stub road into a subdivision, has a stub road into adjacent property and saying, well, we never thought that road would be extended. So I think, you know, with sewer running out there, you have to expect that if sewer's going to the adjacent property, then someone at some point may want to be able to develop that on sewer. So I, it, it's a catch-22 where we are, but I, this is the, in my opinion, Austin, this is the best of the two bad choices we have to make, so.
Well, this is a democracy, and I love it. I will make a motion to approve.
You need to conduct a public hearing first.
Oh, we have a public hearing.
Yeah, all right, so we need to hold a public, her, public hearing. This is on the plan of services, and the, excuse me, yeah, the plan of services and the annexation. Anyone wish?
We already had the public hearing.
Thought we did.
Yeah, okay.
I thought we did, nobody came forward.
Yeah, I thought so too. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, Adam's here over there.
I missed it, it went real quick. You're out of order. I apologize.
I've watched the Tennessee General Assembly for like eight hours today, you know, everybody else is watching the Masters, and I'm watching that, and I learned that I'm not using the gavel enough.
Okay, so I renew my, my motion, Mr. Tucker.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a
Speaker Sexton, I mean, no.
You're out of order. I find everybody out of order. All right, so do we have, we have a motion, this, do we have a second? All right, motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
No.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we need, good points, Austin. Yes, sir.
I just want to make one point, since we've already voted, but the, the thing, just to remember, I think, you know, we, we've, we've lived too long in this world where the county and the city haven't seen their mutual interests in working together, that city residents, our county residents, and if we throw something on them, then the issue is that we're hurting them as, as county taxpayers as well. So, you know, I, I see this as being more of a seeking the partnership, the encouragement to move forward as partners in this, and making the reality of the widening of this road, this important road in our community, closer by the city being a part of it. And, and so anyway, I just want to remind us that whenever we, we, let's lose that dialogue and that narrative that it's us against the county. We, we are ourselves, we are all county residents as well, and so if we can find ways to collaborate, cooperate, work together for the betterment of our citizens, then we'll find ourselves doing the, the public's good.
Great points.
Amen. All right, we'll move to all motion, we have the purchase of extrication equipment. Chief McCluskey?
Do we vote on the annexation?
Vote on that.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order. All right, so we'll move to annex, we need to vote on the annexation, this is Resolution 23R809.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
No.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
All right, now we'll look at purchase of extrication equipment. Chief McCluskey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I come to you proposing a purchase of Homatro extrication equipment for Rescue One in an amount of $51,304 from NAVCO through the HGAC purchasing program. We also request the purchase Hurst extrication equipment for Rescue Four and Eleven in an amount of $94,885 from MES to Southwest, or Source Well Cooperative Purchasing Program. The purpose of this, you may ask, we're buying two different vendors and two, same tools, but two different brands. The purpose of that Rescue One is it specializes in structural collapse in confined space, and Homatro equipment is more compact and better used for these tight spaces. The total equipment cost is $146,189 will be funded through the 22 CIP budget. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, chief. All right, we'll move to the purchase of an Elgin street sweeper. Ms. Chellis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Hope to find you guys well tonight. A couple of things for you. The first on the docket here tonight would be a street sweeper for the street department that will be purchased on a cooperative contract in the amount of $275,000, paid for out of the stormwater fund of FYI 23. This will be in addition to our current sweeping program. As the city grows and as we annex property, we constantly, every year, look at those roads, and we're always adding that information into our system so that we're, so that it does get swept. And currently, we sweep the state routes in the major city thoroughfares at least twice a week. Subdivisions are somewhere around six weeks, and we would like to lower that number closer to more of a month for residential stuff. And so this would be in addition to that fleet and moving forward. So I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
You all do an excellent job. Excellent. I move for approval.
Second.
Wonderful staff.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we need to consider purchasing a skid steer with a bucket and a Harley rake.
Yes, sir. This is a replacement piece of equipment on our stormwater crew. It currently has over 7,000 hours on it, eight years old. This equipment is used most every day for the stormwater crew for routine maintenance and storm drain system, as well as roadside ditches. Of course, with the additional rake added to this mini skid, it allows for a final product to be completed in working grade and dirt for the application of seed and straw. So we, again, we would ask that you would approve the purchase of this. It will be prayed for as well from the FYI 23 Stormwater Fund in the amount of $59,666. And I should have thrown a dollar in there so that we could have got that straightened up, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have for that as well.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Chellis. All right, we, I don't see any board and commission appointments. Any licensing, Ms. Brown?
No, sir.
All right, any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any business from staff?
We'll meet next Wednesday at the airport, 11:30, for our workshop.
So we don't meet Thursday, then? Right?
It's to be seen, but more than likely not.
Okay, well, there's a Preds game, so I'm going to need an answer on that.
Generally, we don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other business from council members?